Result, we came up with a set of issues which are the most important to them. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates on where they stand on these issues. While we understand that there are quite a number of other significant problems and concerns, we will be limiting the discussions because of the little time we have. The discussions will be led by our members. Some quick ground rules. Please mute yourself and stay muted throughout the session. Again, due to time constraints, we are unable to allow the viewing public to ask questions of the candidates. Hopefully, the candidates will provide you with their own respective contact details to enable you to reach out to them. If you're new to Jersey City Together, welcome. Jersey City Together is a broad-based, nonpartisan coalition of thirty-five religious congregations and nonprofits. Since 2016, our work has created more than half a billion dollars in reinvestment in our neighborhoods and schools. As you will see on the screen, we have accomplished a lot, and this means big, big positive benefits for the members of our community. We are a nonpartisan organization. We do not make any endorsements, and we are holding this forum to help those who are listening to get a better picture of the issues facing Wards A and F, as well as the candidates running for office. The bias of the candidates will be in the chat section and will be available for download. Before we start, we would like to invite everyone to join us as we celebrate five years of Jersey City Together and prepare for the work ahead. This event will be on Saturday, October 16, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in person outside at the St. Aden's Courtyard in Bergen, as well as online at njtogether.org/jct5. There will be food and fellowship. Masks will be required. The said information is posted, as you can see. For our opening prayer, I would like to call on Father Mino Chica from the Christ the King Catholic Church and Our Lady of Sorrow's Catholic Church. Father Mino?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Yes. Father Mino. Anyway. I want to, uh, I want, thank you so much for inviting me. I am really inspired, and I really respect what you guys do through Jersey City Together. So thank you so much for not giving up on me, and don't give up on me, please. I just a little story. This doesn't apply to you at all. A bunch of priests are getting invited to, to a conference by this very famous preacher, and they had driven through snow and all that kind of stuff to get to this, to this conference. And, and the first thing that they hear is, um, you know, he said, the preacher says, you are all screwed up. He said, you, all of you guys are totally screwed up. And he said, why? And they're like, my God, we have been driving like hours to come to this conference just to somebody to tell us that we are so screwed up. And he said, you screwed up, he said, because you never prayed to the Holy Spirit. And I'm sure none of us at Jersey City Together screwed up. We're gonna do the prayer to the Holy Spirit for that amazing, you know, uh, extra, extra help that we have from, from God. So, um, I hope that this prayer will, will, will come to our minds and hearts and souls and to everything that we do through, through, through Jesus, our Lord. Come Creator Spirit, come Holy Spirit, Creator, come from your bright heavenly throne. Come, take possession of our souls and make them all your own. You who are called the parochial, best gift of God above. The living spring, the living fire, sweet unction and true love. You who are seven falling in your grace, finger of God's right hand is promised teaching little ones to speak and understand. Guide our minds with your blessed light, with love our hearts inflame, with your strength which never decays, confirm our moral frame. Far from us drive our, our, our hellish foe. Through peace unto us bring, and through all's perils guide us safe beneath your sacred wind. Through you may we, the Father, know, through you, the eternal Son, and you, the Spirit of them both, Christ blessed, three and one. All glory to the Father be, and to the risen Son, the same to you, O parochial, while endless age run. Amen. And may God bless and prosper the efforts of our hands and everything that we do through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, to set up the framework of the meeting, I'd like to call on Reverend Stanley Hurst II.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Reverend Dr. Stanley Hurst II, pastor of Mount Pisgah AME Church in Jersey City in Ward F. In the midst of a global pandemic that has not only affected some of our physical health and all of our mental health, this upcoming election is of utmost importance, especially for Wards A and F. Here's the truth, my brothers and sisters, without coating of figurative sugar. For many residents in these two wards, A and F simply stands for abandoned and forgotten. And the stark contrast between the wards is hard to miss. While some wards in this city are flourishing like mighty oak trees, in the abandoned and forgotten wards, poverty reigns and the wealth gap seems only to get wider. In Wards A and F alone, more than eight thousand families were in severe housing stress before the pandemic. Eight thousand families who could benefit from affordable housing, who have trouble saving for their basic needs, and those numbers are only getting worse. While some wards in this city are so safe that the crime rate is almost zero, in the abandoned and forgotten wards, crime is an ever-present reality. Study after study has backed this up with shootings and socioeconomic need concentrated in the same communities in Jersey City. And while some wards in this city offer life-giving and community-building activities every day of the week, in the abandoned and forgotten wards, we see the daily impact of how mental health challenges and drug addiction are left untreated, and worse, how they're often criminalized instead of cared for, taking real human potential from our neighborhoods and families. The residents of Wards A and F are tired of being abandoned and forgotten, and we need elected officials that have our best interests at heart. We are not looking to elect officials who are big on rhetoric but small on solutions. We are tired of broken promises and slow progress. We are tired of only seeing politicians when it's time to cast a vote. We need politicians willing to fight for us because the problems in our wards will not disappear on their own. We deserve to live in safety. We deserve access to affordable housing. Our returning citizens deserve a fair opportunity at gainful employment. In short, tonight, we are simply looking for leadership, courageous leadership. So you're going to hear two stories from residents here. Stories that bring with them specific commitments that we hope all the candidates for office will share with us. Stories that are backed up not only by listening but research. Commitments that will take courageous action to resolve. We are going to ask candidates for their concrete plans around specific issues that matter in our wards, Wards A and F. These are the issues and priorities we heard about from hundreds of people this spring, and we hope to hear from these candidates how each of them will work to transform these wards from abandoned and forgotten to amazing and flourishing, because that's what our residents, what all of us in Jersey City need and deserve. But before we hear from the candidates, we want you to hear some of their stories, right from the mouths of those who have seen those needs firsthand, and from those who will be asking for leadership from these candidates. Allow me to introduce to you simply a concerned citizen, and her name is Carol Harris.
Good evening. My name is Carol Harris, and I've been a lifelong resident here in Ward F. I'm a retired preschool administrator and a currently active member of Our Lady of Sorrow's Parish. And I want to share with you a concern that we have, and I'm not the only one with the concern. It's a, it's a concern that's going throughout our ward, Wards A and Wards F. Over the last eighteen months, the faith leaders of the Jersey City Together South District Committee on Public Safety, Public Health, and Community Policing have been conducting meetings. We've conducted meetings with local law enforcement officers, local elective officials, policymakers. We've conducted over a thousand listening campaigns where we were able to gather information about the concerns that my fellow residents have. We've also conducted research. One of the continuing themes that came through in all of the listening campaigns was a concern about the violence, a concern about safety, a concern about our fellow citizens who may have mental health or substance abuse disorders that were not receiving adequate care. Our citizens need, with mental health concerns, need more than a trip to jail. They need treatment. They need, we need to have procedures in place that will help address their concerns and help to make our community a safe community. Jersey City, like many other urban areas, have, has, in the past year, seen a rise in the mental health and substance abuse problems. It is so important that, uh, it was very important that in our meetings with the police department, they pointed out that they tend to receive hundreds of calls a month that are dealing with mental health or substance abuse problems, and that they feel very frustrated because they drive them to the medical center, drop them off, and it's just a constant revolving door. Our citizens deserve a lot more, and we can do, do a better job. We need to begin to work towards creating models that can solve our citizens' problems. During our research, we became aware of several models that are national, uh, models that can be replicated. In Miami-Dade County, Judge Luthman has developed a nationally-recognized model called Criminal Mental Health Projects. And of the one thousand five hundred mental health calls that they have received since the project has begun, only a hundred and eighty of those individuals were arrested. More than eighteen thousand people have been diverted to a stabilization unit where these individuals began to get the care they needed and the support that they needed so that they could be contributing, positive contributing members of communities. In Houston, there was a six-month pilot program, and they saw a sixty-nine percent reduction in calls for services by participants in the mental health program, and seventy-eight percent reduction in the emergency detention orders. So Jersey City deserves to have a, to have a model that will lead the country in addressing the needs of our mental health and substance abuse disorder citizens. And what we're concerned about today is how you, the candidates, will work towards supporting these, this model and bringing it to a reality here in Jersey City. What we are asking for is for funding for social workers. We believe that at least one point two million dollars next year would give support for, for those in crisis and divert people to care as opposed to jail. We want to ensure that as many police officers as possible go to crisis intervention training so that they will be able to be supportive of people in crisis. And we also want to bring a crisis stabilization unit to Jersey City, an alternative to jail, an actual opportunity to provide our, our fellow residents with care and support. This is a very important piece to many of us. In my family, I have a close family member who has developed a mental health concern due to the impact of illnesses. And I worry when he gets out, goes out into the street, whether or not he would be seen as a criminal or would he be seen as an individual that needs support and care. Thank you. We are now going to hear from Luisa Reyes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luisa Reyes Mantella. I'm a resident of Bergen, Lafayette for over thirty-five years. In nineteen ninety-four, I saw a flyer from JP Affordable Housing. I was excited to learn I met all the requirements. JP Affordable called me and set up a meeting and told me what papers to bring. I was so excited because I could make a better life for my two children and myself. No one at the meeting told me anything about the ninety-five slash five rule, and they didn't give me any paperwork about it either. On June twenty-third, nineteen ninety-four, I was given a lot of paperwork to sign. The only thing that was explained to me was with the purchase, I needed to maintain a tenant with low or moderate income for a period of twenty years, and that after there was no restriction. There was no mention of a ninety-five dash five rule, and I did not know it exists. However, the gentleman told me that it was a good investment because the value would rise. As a homeowner, I'm constantly upgrading and maintaining my home. I became upset and aware of the poor construction of my home. I pour my life-saving into this home. I find this hard to believe because I would have never purchased a home with such a ridiculous rule that makes no sense where the city gets ninety percent of my hard-earned investments I have made to keep my home up to date. How can the city get ninety-five percent of my investment? That's five percent does not cover the new rule, etcetera. Where is the justice? Then Jersey City sells my property at a current market price, which adds insult to injury. Now nearly retired and looking forward to enjoying it and possibly selling, the ninety-five dash five rule prevents me from doing that. I come to find out that under the ninety-five dash five rule that I knew nothing about until now, I will not recover the money that I paid for this house. How is this fair? My money and time all these years building this home and the majority of the sale belongs to Jersey City? It's a slap in my face, and I want justice. This rules have put a lot of stress on everyone who purchased these affordable housing. JP Affordable Housing should be held accountable for taking advantage of black and brown people who were lied to and taken advantage of under this affordable homeowner program. There are more than a hundred families in this area who were lied to, just like me. We were told we didn't need a lawyer. With the help of Jersey City Together, we are organizing and demanding justice. How can this be allowed to stand in a state where one of the worst wealth gap in the country, where white wealth is fifty times greater than a black and Latino wealth? Something needs to be done to correct this injustice that was done to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol and Luisa. My name is Reverend Dr. Alonzo Perry, Senior. I'm the pastor at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church here in Jersey City. And along with me, Rosemary Robuzi is going, we're going to bring up the candidates. And we're going to bring up the candidates for our office for Ward A and F. In Ward A, there is Councilwoman Denise Ridley and Ms. Kristin Zadroga-Hart. In Ward F, there is Mr. Frank Gilmore, Mr. Vernon Richardson, and Councilman Jermaine Robinson. Now, to prepare each of these candidates, we sent them in advance the format for tonight. There are no gotcha questions. We're not here to ambush anybody. We're not here to shock or surprise anybody. They've had an opportunity to reach out to us, to talk about the questions that, that we have to present or any questions that they may have about this format. And so, we sent them background information on Luisa's story and a proposal from our South District Safety Team. So the questions will be put on the screen as I read them and as Rosemary reads them, and we'll place the wording in the chat for everyone to see. There will be yes and no questions, and we mean yes or no. And then there will be questions to the candidates where they will be given two minutes each to respond. And we will alternate who begins to answer each question so that everyone gets a chance to go first. All right. So I'm gonna call up Rosemary, and she's gonna get the ball rolling.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. To the candidates, you've heard Carol Harris talk about the issues and the work done by Jersey City Together around mental health and substance abuse, and also around alternatives to incarceration. So remember, this is a yes or no question, and we will begin this question with Councilwoman Ridley. Councilwoman, are you committed to working with Jersey City Together to make Jersey City a model for diverting people with mental health and substance abuse issues from incarceration? And when we say this, we mean that it includes at least one point two million dollars for social workers in next year's budget and working with Jersey City Together to bring a crisis stabilization unit to Jersey City. Councilwoman Ridley?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Zadroga-Hart, you're next?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore? You're muted. I think you said yes, but.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, question number two. Okay? And for question number two, we will start the answer with Zadroga-Hart, Gilmore, Richardson, Robinson, and Ridley. Don't worry, we'll remind you after we repeat the question. Question number two is, what is your plan to promote public safety in Ward A and F, engaging residents in positive ways without harassing or overpolicing residents? Okay? The question is also in the chat. So, Zadroga-Hart, two minutes.
Thank you very much. As I drive through Wards A and F, anytime between six p.m. and eight a.m., without fail, I see police cars parked on the corners with their lights flashing. I can't help but be worried about the children who have to walk by those lights on a daily basis, or worse, whose bedroom window might be right above those lights, and they have to fall asleep feeling like they live in a police state. The trauma this causes can last a lifetime. I've seen this trauma firsthand as a teacher in the alternative program for adverse students for over twenty years. This trauma runs so deep, it is embedded in the DNA at this point. That's not hyperbole. Intergenerational trauma is scientifically proven. Jersey City needs to shift the paradigm to a more trauma-informed system of providing social services. Our most impacted residents need access to social workers, psychologists, addiction counselors, domestic violence counselors. The burden of mental health calls needs to be taken away from our police officers, and we need to shift to a more holistic approach so we can begin to heal as a community. Police officers and dispatchers should all receive training on how to better handle mental health and substance abuse calls. The recent incident in Bayonne where a man was tragically killed by a police officer is a prime example of a case that may have been handled very differently had a crisis interventionist been present to defuse the situation. I've had too many students impacted by gun violence on both sides of the gun barrel. To know that reactivism just is not working. We need to be proactive. We need to form greater partnerships with police, families, community groups, and local officials to put in the difficult work of resetting the effects of generations of overpolicing and move towards a growth mindset. Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Um, thank you for having me. Appreciate you guys for putting this forum, and ladies, for putting this forum together. Um, we have to have an open and honest conversation about policing in Jersey City, namely in Ward F. Because if you take a look at the landscape in Jersey City, again, namely Ward F, you see that there are police presence everywhere, right? We have to switch the conversation to talk about preventative measures instead of reactive measures. Our current elected leadership is bolstered by essentially simply putting more police officers on the streets. The mere increase of police presence does not deter crime. In fact, one can make the argument that we put our officers at risk when they're fielding calls to deal with mentally disturbed individuals that's under intoxication. I don't even think we should be training officers to deal with mental health issues. I think there should be a whole separate entity, and funds should be allocated to that entity to deal with this issue. And eighty thousand dollars is, it's almost a giveaway, right? Because if you look at the numbers, to house an inmate in the state of New Jersey, it costs upwards of fifty thousand dollars a year to incarcerate that individual. And again, it puts police officers at a disadvantage. We're calling them, asking them to deal with a call of an individual that's mentally disturbed. They don't have the training. They don't have the wherewithal to do that. So it is on us to create a mechanism where we have individuals who are trained to deal with mental health individuals, and I would even take it a step further to add another layer of accountability. We must have individuals who grew up in these same communities who's filling these calls to encounter these people. Because the reality is, whoever fought it is, there's just not.
That's your turn? Yes, sir.
Okay. Wow.
Thank you so much. And we want to remind the, the candidates that we affirm on the two minutes, okay? So you will get somebody break in when you hit the two minutes, okay? All right. So, Mr. Richardson? You're muted. Unmute yourself, please.
Yes, good evening, and thank you very much. Two thoughts. Uh, one, we were talking a few moments ago about dedicating at least one point two million dollars to hiring social workers and, and carving out a program with address this problem. Frankly, if we're gonna do this, I don't believe one point two million dollars will cut it. It will not provide, of course, seven coverage in the city. I think it under, how, actually cost for the, um, for the, uh, the payment of both salaries and benefits and pensions, etcetera. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it right, and we need to be able to address this concern and not pay lip service to it. As far as ideas as how I would try to address crime in, in, in the, in the ward, I would say to you that any person who comes before you and tell you that they have the solution for crime in the ward, they're trying to sell you something. It, 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 not only that, is that it's not a product of being a councilman. It is the product of the administrative, administration to dictate where police would be utilized across the ward. What, here's an idea, real quick snapshot of how I would try to address the crime issue. It would be more of a bank shot. Most of us who live in this ward have driven up and down the streets and have seen commercial properties that have been vacant, not only for months, but years, some decades. That owners can't change commercial properties and leave them vacant because what they do is not only create eyesores, but they also create a, a situation where those properties become magnets for the element. So one of the things I would do is I would create a registration that would progressively more costly.
That is your time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Oh, yeah. Good evening.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you, Jersey City Together for putting this together, your members and all the supporters. I truly think it's appreciated by all. I just wanna first start by talking about what we've already been doing. And we've already started programs such as Stop, Park and Walk. We've been working on Rock the Block. We've been working with Rock. Rockin' with the Seniors. And those programs are built to bring the community and the police officers together. What we do there is we we bring the community together. We have cookouts, we bring games. And we bring the community and the police together so they can talk in a way that they can get to know each other, not just in a policing way, but in a community way. As we know, Jersey City is the most diverse city in the country. And over my first term, it was important for me to make sure that the community looks exactly like the police department. So seventy percent of all the police officers that we've already hired have been minorities. Because we all know the importance of having people that look like us, that feel the same way we do to go to these calls is definitely needed. Third, we didn't wait for the state to pass the C C R B, the Community Complaint Review Board. We took it a step further and we put a civilian, the first African American woman civilian in charge of our police department. And one reason it was so important for us to put them in charge of the police department is so we can have a different view. It wouldn't be a police academy view. It would be a view of the people of the city. And I think that was so important. And lastly, we we put together a Ward F cleanup. I put together Ward F cleanup and it was to do more than just clean up the ward. It was to get close to those residents, those residents that had the mental health issues and substance issues. We we partnered with Health and Human Services, both in the county and in the city. And also community development to get out there to offer programs. We put people into permanent homes as well. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ridley?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. You know. I look at this question as more of a how can we? Get the community involved. And make this a more holistic approach. So before I was on council, I hosted meet and greets between the police recruits. That were in the academy and the residents in Ward A. Well, open to all of Jersey City, but the meetings were in Ward A at my church. And we would meet with the cadets that were in the academy and tell them what we were looking for before they even got to the point of being on the street. That worked really well. The residents really liked it. They liked those interactions and having that opportunity to speak to our future police officers and make those connections ahead of time. I'd like to see more programs such as that and to build off of that model. I also believe that we have to, as a community, make sure that we are getting residents engaged in. Community groups and block associations. You have Greenville Neighborhood Alliance with Sandra Lovely that does. A great job of trying to make sure all of our block associations are together. We all have to be active. You have members of G R C together that are bringing the churches together. These are all very vital parts of our community. And we need that activity. And the other thing that we need is we cannot be afraid of our young people that are out here. And might be committing some of these crimes. For example, some of the things that are going on right now at Triangle Park. You know, that's a very difficult area in Ward A is. We have that Triangle Park community center there that does awesome work with the kids. They engage the young folks in that area. They're not afraid. To engage them. They break bread with them. They have dinner with them. We have community advocates that are out there every Wednesday. Eating with the kids, playing basketball, just engaging and mentoring. And then one of the things that I do is, you know, I try to go out there with job opportunities because realistically, people need jobs and they need work. They need alternatives other than the street. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, candidates, you've just heard Luisa Reyes also talk about as a homeowner, her experiences in being subject to the ninety five five rule. I like to say that I've had that same experience as a homeowner. Here on Woodward Street, as well as hundreds of other Jersey City residents. And so this is a yes or no question. We will begin with Mr. Gilmore, followed by Mr. Richardson, followed by Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Rodriguez and Ms. Hart. The question is, will you work with Jersey City together? To ensure homeowners who bought affordable homes through J P Affordable Housing? In the nineteen nineties and early two thousands? And who were unfairly subject to the ninety five five rule? Are able to access the full wealth of their homes? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson? You're muted, Mr. Richardson.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ridley?
Yes.
And Ms. Zadroga Hart?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're piggybacking on the same issue. And. It's one of these things that our constituents, when we put our ear to the ground, they're really concerned about. And the question is, and the order that we'll answer is. Richardson, Robinson, Ridley, Hart, and Gilmore, okay? What is your concrete plan? To create and keep housing truly affordable for working class residents in Ward A and F? Including meeting the needs of those at lower incomes? And what is your plan to increase affordable home ownership that builds wealth in Jersey City? We'll start with Mr. Richardson.
If we're so. If we're so unfortunate not to have a an inclusion ordinance in place by. Of. Counsel, and if I was fortunate enough to be on that council, would immediately adopt Councilman LaBarro's I Z O ordinance. And then immediately start working to make it even more tighter. I think that we need to not just say that we want affordable housing because. Words have been fought over differences in definite of the words. What's affordable to you isn't affordable to me. And. At the same rate, not want to have an affordable housing project built in Ward F. That is to the standard of seventeen hundred dollars a month. Because for most part in my community, seventeen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars a month is not affordable. But at the same time, you do not want to, in essence. ghettoize the system by saying, well, Ward F is gonna be extremely poor and downtown, it'll be. More moderate affordable housing. Well, the answer is, is to set up a system whereby. There's a commitment to having affordable housing at all levels, not at the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I as it is currently being doled out. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, so I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and I also, I've been a member since I joined city council. I'm a Realtor for the last twenty one years here in Ward F. So I have a firsthand view of the needs of a resident. So with this, I have more than a plan. I have a track record. Over the last four years, we've helped create over three thousand units in Jersey City with over fifteen hundred. Being deemed affordable by the federal standards. So that's well over fifty percent. Well over that twenty percent that we talked about with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. The first thing I did when I was on council was be, I started to work on Whitlock Mills. It was a project that was sitting vacant for sixteen years. And since then, we've got three hundred and thirty units, two hundred and seventy being affordable. We also have the scattered sites on Ocean and Kearney, Ocean and Orient. We have the Bayview Avenue that's coming. That's a hundred percent affordable. The Mill Creek, we did at Montgomery. We did the Dr. Lena Edwards. That's also a hundred percent. And and I've also helped to create five brand new homes on Virginia out of just the ground. We've created other projects with renovations. We did some on Egi, Myrtle, Stagman, just to name a few. So I'm committed to ending a tale of two cities by creating more homeownership opportunities. Because that's what I got my license in real estate for twenty one years ago to help people become first time home buyers. We've done a lot of work in the city. We need to do a whole lot more. But when it comes to affordability, I really think that I stand on solid ground with creating and pushing for affordable housing. There's no other board in the city that I wanna sit on except the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you.
Ridley?
Thank you. With affordability, you know, we've started a lot of work in Ward A around affordability. One of the things that. Was important to me coming into office is that nothing was built without. Having a community meeting and having that community input. And I can say, since I've been in office, any project that has come across my desk, I've held a community meeting on public input. Open meeting. As far as affordability. You know, all of the the projects that have come in the last four years have had units in it in Ward A. Of course, people are familiar with Bayfront, which is the the largest, which is going to be thirty five percent affordable. With over two thousand units, over twenty hundred units of affordability at Bayfront. We have an affordable home ownership condo building in Ward A, which is Cayenne condos at seventy eight M L K. I really like that building. I like that model. I think we need a more affordable home ownership. I think we need to definitely learn from the past and make sure that we don't have that same issue. You know, that the young lady was speaking about before where now she's looking to sell and she can't get the buyer of her home. So I think we definitely need to learn from our past on affordable housing and homeownership, but we need more affordable homeownership programs. Actually, right now, I'm a J C R A Commissioner also. I'm working with J C R A to make sure that we have. Affordable homes for teachers, police, and fire because sometimes they are left out of that affordability zone and we need something to cover. Our residents who may not be in low income and are definitely not in that luxury income bracket. So we are working towards those things.
Okay, okay. Hart, yes?
Thank you very much. First of all, I definitely think we need a strong I Z O and I I think that should have been passed and it should still be passed. As per the Jersey City website, Ward A currently only has thirty nine units of affordable housing. In a ward where over ninety percent of the public school students qualify for free or reduced lunch, that's unconscionable. As a community, we need to prioritize pathways to homeownership and begin generational wealth among our residents. Jersey City needs to partner with a nonprofit entity to provide independent oversight along with existing agencies such as the Housing Authority and the Redevelopment Agency. To develop a land bank with all of the existing lots and lands that are owned by the city. The partnership would replicate the Nehemiah Homes Plan that was very successful in New York City in the nineteen eighties. We would build or rehabilitate properties using union labor as well as individuals who might be reentering the workforce as apprentices. The homes would be owner occupied. The buyer would assume two thirds of the mortgage. And the other one third would come from a second mortgage paid by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. A ten year payment in lieu of taxes would be paid directly back into the Housing Trust Fund so that others also may. Benefit from the generational wealth and then we can have people on a path to homeownership and not just be renters all the time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, I think Jersey City have a very unique opportunity as it relates to home ownership and affordable housing. But I will say this, I don't want all of the affordable units in just Ward F. I want it scattered out throughout the entire city. And if you listen to the current elected leadership, they're saying that since they's been in office, they've created almost. Fifteen thousand affordable units for renting and only five affordable for housing. We have a major issue with affordable housing. We need to also talk about enforcement of the affordable housing. Because a lot of time, these developers are very disingenuous as it relates to units that's being affordable. In fact, there's an individual. Who's running for office now who didn't know that he was in an affordable unit being charged market rate. So I think on top of affordability, when we create that mechanism, there needs to be a mechanism to attract. The enforcement of the affordability. And the reality is that we have a unique opportunity in front of us. We have a plethora of dilapidated lots here in Jersey City. We have first time home buyer programs in the state and in the city. We can create a mechanism where local contractors are building on these dilapidated lots. Employing residents from Jersey City to work on these sites. Thus giving these homes at a reasonable rate to local working residents in Jersey City. And subsequently, the city will benefit by creating property tax from these establishments. So we have a unique opportunity in front of us. And I think we need to take advantage of that, but we can only take advantage of that if we have real authentic, community minded individuals. Sitting on a council as opposed to individuals who are in the bed with developers.
All right, listen, we wanna thank y'all for your response to that. I just wanna say that. You mentioned in Bayfront and Nehemiah Homes. Nehemiah Homes, the New York. Organization that built Nehemiah Homes is one of our sister organizations. And if it hadn't been for Jersey City Together pushing the city council, the mayor, this city. To move ahead and purchase Bayfront, we would not be talking about thirty five percent affordability. So I just wanted to put that in so everybody knows that it was at the impetus of Jersey City Together that we went in. And we put our necks on the line. It was also I C O that predated us. That went in and demanded that those properties get cleaned up of the chromium. So a lot of this stuff was put in place before. A lot of folk are taking credit today, but Jersey City Together was out there and I C O. Way back in the eighties and nineties pushing these issues. All right, so Rosemary?
Thank you Reverend Perry. Candidates, this next question is regarding employment opportunities for Jersey City residents. And I think we all know how important employment is to a person's dignity. As well as the economic benefits that come along with it. The question, this is a two minute question. And we will begin with Councilman Robinson, followed by Councilwoman Ridley. Followed by Ms. Hart, Mr. Gilmore, and Mr. Richardson. The question is, what plan do you have to connect Jersey City residents, including returning citizens with jobs? What resources are needed to implement your plan? And how would you measure the success of that plan?
So I do that every day in my day to day life. I own a family barber shop for twenty one years. Own a light rail cafe for ten years and we own, I own the Life of Pop Pizzeria that is about one years old. I'll just tell you a quick story about employment. And it was in one of my employees, Candido. And Candido was referred to me by J C A P, Jersey City Employment and Training. Candido was pardoned by the Obama administration. He was sentenced to twenty six years in federal prison and he was. And when he came home, he started working for me and I started mentoring Obama. It's sad to, I mean, Candido. It's sad to say that Candido is no longer working with me. But right now, Candido has not one but two restaurants here in Jersey City that he vowed to. Do to return the favor and hire minorities from Jersey City and also second chance people. I've been working with Commissioner Walker. We brought the Creditable Messenger Program here to Jersey City and it partners. Incarcerated people with people that's already home. We fought and we got three hundred thousand dollars for the program for this first year. And we've already been talked with the commissioners for a five year program. We've also been working with local contractors and we're working with the the union contractors to build Jersey City's first. Training program right there on Pacific Avenue. And what I can say that we need to do is just continue to promote programs like J C A P and add money and add funds into it. And work with the county and the state with for more resources to make sure that we are training our residents. Because if they're not trained, then there's no way that they can get hired and and keep a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ridley?
I'm sorry, I was finding my my mute button. Uh, prior to what I was getting into before about about jobs and making sure that our uh younger people have jobs so they can find alternatives outside of uh illegal activity is one of the things that, you know, was happening at Triangle Park, which is, you know, I was out there with DPW trying to make sure that the young people had summer jobs. Anything that we can do from the city standpoint, we need to get out in the community and make sure that we're making those resources available. Uh, so we were out there with them. Last Wednesday, we were there with the union. Uh, myself, Bill O'Day was there, uh, making sure that these young men and young women have other options. So that's a big thing. There was um a gentleman that came to me and asked me about CDL training. So now I'm working with that young man to see if we can start some type of training program through the city so that young people can get their CDL. A lot of our students may not uh be college educated, but that doesn't mean that they can't have a successful career. Um, people are always looking for certain skills and we need to make sure that our kids in Jersey City have those skills. We have to make Jersey City employment and training more visible. Um, you know, they've undergone a transition over the last couple of years uh and there's still more assistance that's needed. Uh, currently, I'm working with the Health Department. They have a big uh bus that they use, a resource bus that's used for other things. I'm trying to see if we can get that bus to now include uh job opportunities uh and other resources that are needed in these communities. In addition to that, any new companies that that are coming in the area, we have a a target that's set to come at the old Kmart. We have a ShopRite that's coming. All those conversations include making sure that we are hiring locally, making sure that we're tapping into our local schools in the area to uh employ our high school youth and to just make sure that those jobs are first going to local residents and that they're having job fairs here on site that people can access.
Ms. Zadruga Hart?
Thank you. As we begin to come out from under the weight of a global pandemic and businesses are rethinking the way they operate, we are experiencing an increase in unemployment. We're also going to see mass evictions uh as the eviction moratorium is lifted. In addition to this, we must also do a better job as a community to support residents who are re-entering the workforce. Re- entry efforts should not start on the date of release. That's just too late. Efforts must begin at the time of intake and extend well beyond release. Re-entry planning must be done on an individual basis and include any and all services that will aid in helping to limit recidivism. Partnerships with the public and county schools, trades unions, programs like the Jersey City Employment and Training Program, partnered with assistants with housing, addiction services, social workers, mental health professionals and any other services that will support a successful re-entry. Support for clients as it relates to employment should be twofold. We must focus on training as well as job placement. Seeking out employers that can provide opportunities for meaningful jobs. Experiences has shown to increase job retention and create better long-term success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, um, I believe the question is threefold, um, which I didn't hear all the answers to all of the thoughts. So I'm gonna specifically address the question that you asked. What is your plan to connect Jersey City residents and food and residents who are coming home? So my, our first plan to create a mechanism where we have services available for these returning demographic that come to uh Jersey City. The JSEP program is essentially a joke, a joke and nothing more than a political appointment set spot. Now, how how would we be able to measure the success of the program that we implement? One, by making sure individuals gain meaningful employment and keep meaningful employment. Two, by looking at the recidivism rate. There's a direct correlation with unemployment and incarceration. I also have a business and I hire individuals from the community in which the business is located. So that's what I would do when I'm council. I will make sure, the first thing I would do is make sure that the individuals who's leading JSEP is not a political appointment that's doing the work of the people that's not beneficial for Jersey City.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you very much. Um, I guess this is an opportunity for me to actually expand on my earlier in our conversation. Um, Ed spoke about um one of the ways that we would uh decrease crime is through um creating a uh vacant, commercial rental vacancy fee um whereby we put downward pressure on um commercial property owners to decrease the um, decrease the rents in their, on their properties because they will be continually, continuously hit with progressive uh fees, but leaving them vacant. Um, by doing that, um, people that have uh that entrepreneurial spirit that would like to open up uh a small shop would be more inclined to be able, as cost of entry um decrease. And most of these sales-type spots hire people coming in from New York or coming from other parts of Hudson County. It's usually within that general neighborhood or across the city. So that would be a way to uh both decrease crime because as you uh open up these shops, you have people walking by. It is not a vacant area. It's not an eyesore of the community. Uh, it's paper, the criminal element is driven out, more jobs are created. It's it's in a way that I would measure it by the number of jobs that were created. The 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 level of crime that were uh to take place in that immediate environment. Because it's a, it's a uh a bank shot, Ed, trying to solve this problem.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, um, this is our final question and this question is a yes or no. Yes or no question and the order is uh Councilwoman Ridley, uh Ms. Hart, Mr. Gilmore, uh Mr. Richardson and Councilman Robinson in that order. So here is the question. If elected, are you committed to lead on issues in Ward A and F being visible on local issues even when it's difficult and having an open door policy with Jersey City Together? Yes or no?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
When I'm elected on November third, it's gonna be more than-
Yes or no? Yes or no?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, yes, I would.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all so very much. Now, uh obviously, we 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 would love to have had more time, but we're living in the land of COVID and we're on uh Zoom. And we want to thank all of these candidates for coming and uh taking out their busy schedules to be with us on this evening. Uh, but my question to you who are listening is, uh, what did you hear? Did you hear leadership? Did we hear a willingness to respond to the stories of of these constituents? Uh, did we hear any calls for action? The election is around the corner. And uh, we've had a chance, uh, albeit not as much time as we would love to have, but we've had a chance to see these candidates up front. My hope and prayer is that you will go to the polls and you will vote. You vote your conscience, you vote uh what you believe is the best interest for your ward, Ward A and Ward F. So again, from Jersey City Together, we want to thank you so much for joining with us tonight. At this time, it's my great pleasure to pass the mic to Reverend Donovan Shum.
I couldn't find myself on the screen for a moment. I wanna say thank you to each and every one, uh, and uh, as we've heard the different things, a lot of things to process. We have a lot of work in our city. Everything comes with a lot of difficulty, it seems. And but we want to see a quality of life. And so we want to pray at this time as we close. Almighty God, we come before you this evening and Lord, we thank you for each candidate who has taken the time to come and answer and present uh their different thoughts and views. And we pray that these will not just be promises or something of words that are said and then thrown to the side. So we pray, oh God, and may they, Lord, see this. I I pray that our leaders would see this as being servants uh to the community and not just people who have power in their hands. So we lift this before you. Give us a process of of weighing out, oh God, about how to vote. And uh, Lord, and and we can all uh work in this city together and not in division. So we lift this before you tonight and now God bless this time and I pray that uh in the days ahead, we will see better things coming. So we ask this in the mighty name, your mighty name tonight. Amen. Amen.